They need to go to North Little Rock or to VA. Our friend is not...
We're coming in.
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. First, I need to let you know that Alderman Lewis sent me a text message late this afternoon and said he would not be here tonight, so he will not be in attendance at the meeting. And at this time, I've asked Alderman John Vapirzan to lead us in prayer and the invocation, or the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for so many gifts that you've been to us. Most of all, thankful for your grace and mercy because it's amazing to us that while we were sinners, you still provide it for us, knowing that ahead of time. And that your love for us is unlike anything we could ever experience. And so, God, we're thankful for this evening, thankful for our wonderful city, for the leadership that you've given to us, and for the wisdom that you can provide for us if we just ask for it. Father, we ask for our nation, tumultuous times. Father, we ask for protection for the men and women who protect us here and overseas. And, Lord, may we be thankful tonight for what we have. Give us wisdom tonight. May we make wise, conscientious decisions that would honor you, and we'll thank you for it in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is special guests and announcements. And tonight, we're honored to have personnel from Central Arkansas Water and North Little Rock Waste Water here to discuss some issues that are brought before the council. And I know Mr. Tad Bohannon is in the audience, the CEO of Central Arkansas Water, and Mr. Mark Wilkins from North Little Rock Waste Water, the general manager for North Little Rock Waste Water, and also see several other representatives. So I'm gonna let each one of them introduce their personnel as they need to, because we've also got board members from Central Arkansas Water in the audience also. So, Mr. Bohannon, if you want to start, and then we can turn it over to Mr. Wilkins also after that.
Sure. Thank you all. I'm glad to be here, actually. The mayor and I had actually talked about about a month ago, I guess, about possibility of me coming, and we were thinking maybe it might be in October instead of right now to come back and just give you all an update as to what's going on. But this is fine. I'm happy to be here. I do want to introduce a couple of people. I do, we have two commissioners from Central Arkansas Water here. Jay Hartman is here in the front, and sitting right behind him is Eddie Powell, who is one of our, he's actually, his 15th year as a commissioner this year. He's starting his 16th year. He served 15 years as a commissioner. And then next to him is Samantha, who's from our communications office. And if you have had any communication with Doug, and then it would be with Samantha also, as far as if we have communications issues we need to deal with. And then, next to her is my replacement as general counsel when I took over this job as CEO, and that's David Johnson. And he joined us about two months ago, and we're excited to have him on board. So, that's the representatives from Central Arkansas Water. I did bring one piece of art. It's there in your, in front of you, and I'll get to talk to it about a minute. But as if, I want to just address a few things. I think I'll hit some of the issues that I have heard about, and then, of course, I'll be free to answer any questions. Or if you want to interrupt me because I hit something that you're concerned about, we'll just take those questions as they come. But as you know, Central Arkansas Water and Mammell Water Management were consolidated as of March 1st. So it's been five months today that we've been consolidated. And despite maybe a few phone calls that you all have received, I think it's been a fairly good process, and there's been a lot accomplished. To give you an idea of where we are and what we're doing, I would just want to throw some numbers out there, okay? First of all, we added a crew in our distribution next work just to help deal with some of the issues and some of the calls and some of the problems that we were having in the Mammell water system as we took over management. To date, our distribution crews, we divide our field service and our distribution into kind of two different groups. And the distribution guys are the big guys. They're the guys that come out with the backhoe, all right? They're the ones that bring the whole crew truck and the trailer and what have you behind them. But just to give you an idea, since March, from March 1 to July 1, we processed 1,129 work orders in Mammell, okay? Now, you say, okay, $1,129. That's 17% of all the work orders that we did system-wide. Now, Mammell is about 7% of our system. So, we've, we're working out here about two and a half times, if you look at on a system-wide, system of what's going on. So, we're out here working. Our trucks are out here. We're out here getting stuff done. If you go to the other side of it and you look at the field service rep guys, that's the, they show up with a shovel instead of a backhoe. From March 1, and I have more current numbers on then, up to July 31, we've processed over almost 6,000 work orders, okay? Now, that's the, just help me do a meter reread. Help me with this issue. I got a problem. And sometimes, those guys then have to call the big guys, say, hey, I got out here and I found a problem and what have you. And that's about 20% of our work orders for the field service reps. And again, Mammell's about 7% of our system. So, we're out here, we're out here working. Our distribution crews normally work Monday through Thursday, 10 hours a day. They have to drag the trucks out and get everything going. So, we have guys on call seven, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. But as far as working normal hours, it's normally Monday through Thursday, 10 hours a day. We've had crews working every Friday just in Mammell since the consolidation took place, to try to keep up and make sure that we're getting some of the extra work done. So, we've been around a lot, our trucks. We've dug some holes. We've torn up some concrete. We've torn up some pavement. I know we've been here, but we're trying to make improvements to the city. Now, if you look at your artwork, okay, just to give you an example, that is a service line, okay? And that is what runs from the main to the house, all right? All those little white joints on there are clamps. They're patches, fix and repairs. We're not patching, okay? So, a patch, if we did patch, is a fairly quick job. So, you can come in, you can dig a small hole, you can find the leak, you can patch it and what have you, and say, but, then you come back again and you tear up somebody's yard, or you tear up the street if it's a line that runs underneath the street. Because remember, the main's only on one side of the street. So, if this service line is going across the street and it's going to the yard on the other side of the street from the service main, you're tearing up the street. So, we're not patching, okay? When we come out and we do a service line repair, we are actually replacing the service line. And we're not replacing it with polybutylene plastic there. We're replacing it with copper. Copper has a better work history. It doesn't replace, it doesn't do, all right? So, so we're replacing service lines. And so, that's part of what we're doing. So far, we've replaced 74 of these services, okay? We've got a few to go, all right? We're gonna do some more. But that's to give you an idea of what we're looking at when we're replacing things, okay? Let's tell them, the mayor, before the meeting, we've had 18 main breaks. Had one this morning, okay? So, I hope you haven't, maybe you've heard or gotten a phone call about one, or maybe two, all right? But we've had 18 since March 1, all right? That we're working to repair those main breaks and fix those main breaks. So, we're working on those. So, when you go back to the customer service, I mean, the field rep guys, the big guys, the distribution workers, sorry, you go back to the distribution workers, and we've had, that's where we're having to call out the backhoe and get in big work. We've got over 1,200 orders right now. There are 37 in process, okay? That's it. Of those, only seven are more than 30 days old. And six of those sevens, we're waiting on utility locates, which means we've also said, hey, it's not an emergency, all right? Because we'll dig without it if we have to, you know? So, it's not an emergency. But, so we're, you know, 30, I don't think 37, less than 30 days old, in the type of work we do, is a big number, right? We can discuss that if you want to, all right? But in the type of work we do, I don't look at that as being a big number. So, you know, some of those are, you know, it's a small line replacement. And yes, and if you look out in the curb, there's water running. It's on our side of the meter. It's our water, not the customer's water, you know? It's, it's, but you have to prioritize how you get to things, how quickly you get to things, when you do things, and it's just lower down on the priority, and we'll get to it, all right? We've, we've cleared out over 1,100 of them, and we've got 37 still pending. We, one of the very first things we did was meet with Friends of Mammell Animals, I've probably butchered that name, and the fire chief. And we worked out, what are we gonna do about the Dalmatian Dog Fire Hydrants, all right? And we, we said, fine, you can keep the Dalmatian Dog Fire Hydrants. We'll work with you on that, all right? And you can paint new ones if you want to, if it's a fundraiser and you want to do it. Now, all the other fire hydrants, we've been painting silver. And I think there's a discussion, and it may have gone past that, but this just came up last week, about a neighbor wanted one silver that's painted like a dog, because the neighbor that had the dog painted has now moved, and the neighbor with, the property owner with the fountain, fire hydrant in their front yard wants it painted silver. And we said, that's not our call. You work it out with the friends, and if they say it's okay to paint it silver, we'll paint it silver. Now, there is one thing we have told them. Those are our fire hydrants, and we have to maintain them. We have to work with the fire department to make sure they're working properly and that they stay in good condition. And we said this, if we go out and we find a fire hydrant because it hasn't been painted as a dog in so long, that the paint is flaking off, that it's starting to rust in spots, we're going, our crews are there, and this was decided three months ago when we first had the conversations, we're gonna clean it up and we're gonna paint it silver. But if you all want to come back later and repaint it as a dog, you can repaint it as a dog. Now, the other thing we're doing with every one of those fire hydrants is we're pressure testing them, and they've been banded by a different color, so that the fire department, when they show up, they go, oh, that's got a blue band on it. I know that's running 120 PSI. Oh, that's got a red band on it. It's running at 160 PSI. They know what their pressure is they're running. And this is something we do in Little Rock and North Little Rock, and now we're moving that progress here. The other thing we're doing is we're putting a number on the back of them, because we've GPS'd every one of them. We've GPS'd every valve and meter in the system. We've exercised every valve to make sure that it's working, and if it's not working, we've put a repair order into it to get it fixed, okay? GPSing, you say, well, what's the big deal on that? When you're called out at 2:00 in the morning in February because there's been a water main break and you need to get the water shut off, it is really nice to be able to just pull everything, the whole system up on a GPS map and go out and be able to say, okay, that meter is right over here within a foot of this area right over here, and so we can figure out what's doing on. So, we're doing good with that, okay? We've also GPS'd all the meters. Now, one of the complaints we've heard is there were some large water bills. And I don't know if you all received one, but when the water bills went out in June, we noticed it after they went out. And we got a few phone calls, and we said, wait a minute. So, we sent a letter to everybody whose water bill was 40% greater than their six-month average. It's 1,400 letters. And we told every one of those people, if you will call us, if you're concerned, if you don't know why your water bill is higher, if you'll call us, we'll come out and look at it. We'll check it. We'll look for leaks. We'll check the meter. We'll reread the meter to make sure it was read right. Now, I don't want to get into a bunch of specifics, but I do want to say, we ran into some personnel shortcuts that were being taken, okay? And it basically boils down to this. They'd walk up to a meter and they'd say, well, that's 1,800 units used. And they'd walk up the next meter and go, 1,800 units used. And they'd walk up the next month and go, 1,800 units used. Well, I think if you all went and looked at your own water bill, you'd find out that you didn't use the exact same number of units every month. But what happened is when we changed meter readers out, which we regularly do, because we don't want the same meter readers reading the meters every month. It's easier that way. They know exactly where it is. They memorize the system. They know where it is. But there's no audit check that way. When the next meter came, reader came along and they said, oh, they've had 7,600 gallons of water usage. And the property owner says, no way did I have 76. I've only got 1,800, 1,800, 1,800, 1,800. Said, no, you really probably had 2,400 to 2,600. And then, you were being under billed for three, four, five, six months. And then, when it got caught up, when it got reread. But just to be sure, we've gone out when those meters called and had, when those customers called and had concern, we've gone out, we've met with them. If they called in, we've, some of them, we've pulled their meters. We have one lady that I know you all heard from, that we pulled her meter, and that's why she had a double zero read, all right? They probably should have used the old meter readings. We had a little discussion about that. But they pulled her meter, they took her meter to the laboratory, they tested it, it read fine within specs. We said, well, what's going on here? So, we started interviewing neighbors. And we got responses from neighbors from where maybe some of that water usage was going. We also put a device on her meter to read her meter every four hours, so that we can go in, it's not a, we have to go down and download the information, but we're gonna be able to tell in the future, where's that water going through that meter? When's that water going through the meter? So that we can help to address the problem. We also gave a credit. We looked at it and we said, there's something going on here, and we gave a credit. So, we're working with that property owner to try to resolve those issues. Now, is it over resolved overnight? Do we know all the answers yet? No. But we continue to look at it, and we continue to try to address those problems as they're raised, okay? See what else is on my list of things to do. We had questions about the wells. The wells are fine. We're lucky. We had seven inches of rain. Nobody's watering their yard anyway. I mean, it's twice the, twice, over twice the rain that you normally have in a July, so everybody's turned their sprinkler systems off, but we're fine. We've had to do some work out there. We've had to replace a number of pumps. We spent about $75,000 in the well field since March 1 to make sure that the wells are gonna be prepared and make it through. Now, I'm gonna jump ahead in my presentation a little bit, and, because I think it's important. I looked at the engineers, remember, we first said, well, it's gonna be, you know, 30 months maybe before we get all done. I said, we're gonna change water sources March 1 of 2018, two years from the date we took over. And they said, really? I said, yes. Okay, so they're working on a schedule. We're gonna go to bid on the construction right at the end of the year, so they can start construction in January, 12-month construction schedule. Then we start testing the system, testing the line, even the transition, and we transition water March 1 of 2018, all right? We got this summer to get through, and we have next summer to get through. But we're not going through a third summer, okay? When we get the water main in place and the new line in place, we'll have 12 million gallons of water per day available, which is, right now, three to four times what you use on an average day. So, we'll have plenty of water once the main, so we gotta get through the rest of the summer, and we have to get through next summer. And then, we ought to be ready to go. We're doing testing right now on lines. We pulled out sections of the pipe. We have our water quality people in our laboratory running new water through it to see what the chemicals do as we change water sources, all right? Where then, we'll start working with the industries. We've already had some conversations with some of them about water quality and how those are gonna change. But we'll have a more thorough dialogue with all the industries here in town as we move closer to that water change date to make sure that they're prepared for the new water, okay? We have made a few changes in the water treatment process. Nothing huge, nothing great. But, so, there may have been a little bit of changes. But if somebody's detecting changes in taste, they are really good. We need to find them, find them a new job, because, I mean, some of the processes have changed. But it's, it's not where just, oh, overnight, their water has just changed. We are still treating Arkansas River well water that's come for the, come through the alluvial aquifer and being pumped out of the ground. And it's basically, we're treating the same, but we have changed the process a little bit. And we've spent some money at the plant. But as you know, we're gonna decommission that plant as we change water sources, and then we'll go from there. So, where are we today? March 1, we took over. Now, we're five months in, okay? January, we are planning to change billing systems. Now, why is that important? Right now, we are still using Mammell Water Management's Customer Information Service, their billing system, okay? I don't know how many of you are used to working with billing systems, but they're complex, and people lose their careers over them when they don't change properly. And I just started, and so I'd rather not, that happen right now. And hopefully, it won't happen in January either. But as we change billing systems and we move from Mammell Water Management Systems to Central Arkansas Water Billing System, we're gonna have to test it. We're gonna run, start running mock bills. We won't mail those bills out, but we'll basically run two billing systems side by side for several months to make sure that they're matching and they're coming out with the same bills. And we'll need to make sure that that transition goes smoothly. But that does present a few problems that have been raised to some of the issues, okay? Mammell's Water Management, they do not, they did not winter average as part of their billing system when they were billing before. They didn't have a winter average rate, okay? We called the software company that manages their current system and said, hey, what can you all do? And they said, we don't have a single customer that winter averages. But we'd be happy to give it a shot if you'd like us to. And after further discussions and after what have you, we don't like billing systems that mess up. We want people to get bills that they can rely on and trust in. So, we're gonna hold off, and we're gonna make that transition to the winter averages. We make the transition into our billing system, okay? We run 122 different types of bills every month. When we add you all for your community collection fee and your trash collection, if we do that in the future, we'll even run more types of bills. But we have a very robust, very capable billing system that we've been testing for years. Give me some wood to knock on. We've never missed a billing cycle. We bill every day, all right? But we don't want any hiccups in that. And so, we just kept using the Mammell Water Management Billing System the way it works and the way that we knew it works. So, come January, we'll change billing systems. That'll change our customer information systems, which means when somebody calls in, we have complete records of everything that's going on, every work order. Our work, our work orders and our billing systems dovetail together, so that when you call in and somebody pulls up your account, we say, oh, you called in yesterday, and we see that you have this work order, and we have cruised this schedule out there and work on that. That's not an option for us available right now under the Mammell Water Management old system. But we'll get there. We're working hard to get there. We want to get there in an organized fashion. We want to get there where it works properly, and we'll get there come about the first of the year, okay? April 17, we'll then be able to establish the winter average rates for the Mammell. So, when we go into next month's, next year's sprinkler season, they'll be on the winter average for the sewer bills, okay? March 18, March of 2018, I already told you is when we'll do the transition, okay? And then, once we transition water sources, we'll go to CAW rates, and we'll come off of the Mammell Water Management rates. So, I know I've talked for a few minutes. Is there something that you have concerns about that I did not address that you'd like to ask me about? Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming and giving us such an in-depth information. That was very helpful. I've only got one question. It was one that came up before we were able to kind of give you the questions that we had, or it came up after the questions that we sent ahead. And it was, and it's probably related to the change in the water treatment that you had talked about. When did you say that that was, that change?
We started doing those changes in April, and they've been tweaking that system.
Well, it's not that, that people have changed, that have talked to me, said that they, they noticed a change in the taste, but they noticed that they had to, they had trouble with doing some of their white loads in their laundry, that they got some staining. And it, and it didn't seem like it was in a local area, you know, maybe there was a service line that was being repaired, and maybe some dirt got through the system or something like that. It seemed more like it was in various parts of, of my ward that people were complaining. But when I, when I told them to go ahead and call you guys, I don't know if they followed through. So, I was just wondering if maybe that change in treatment might have been able to, been affected that.
No, I appreciate that very much. Staining in laundry comes when water pressure through pipes is increased, and it basically scours the inside of the pipe, and it removes some of the buildup that's incurred over the pipe. Over, it's not harmful to drink, but it does push some deposits through that if you're washing whites can, can cause some staining. That normally occurs when there's a main break. It's not that something gets into the pipe. It's that there's a sudden flow through that breaks stuff. There's a water hammer that occurs. Is there something that breaks loose some of those deposits inside? The other time it can occur is when you have a water main break or a water main taken out of service, and you close off valves, thereby pushing more water through other pipes to try to get areas covered, okay? If we're normally pushing 400 gallons of water per minute through three pipes, and all of a sudden, we shut one of them off, and now we're pushing 400 gallons of water per minute through two pipes, that increased velocity causes some of the scaling inside the pipes to break loose, and it can cause some staining. We try our best to give notice out to people. We'll see public service announcements that say, don't wash your whites. You'll see it when we do flushing through fire hydrants. A lot of periodically, we go through and we'll say, we're gonna be in your neighborhood on this date. You know, we point-blank say, don't wash your whites, right Samantha? You know, so we try to address that. If that occurred, we're very sorry. But we try to get out notice when we can, and that's what that's from. It's not from a change in the treatment process.
And you give out notice through like a texting or email distribution, or how, how, because the reason I ask that is because the first thing I'm gonna say is, well, let's make sure that you get notice next time, you know?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're not Energy. I wish we were. I say that to my people, and Jay Hartman's from Energy back here. And I say that to my people all the time. What's it gonna take? You know, I'd love for us to have that little outage map.
Right.
Your electric bill this summer is probably $300 or $400. Sorry, Jay, I'm throwing you under the bus. You know, your, your, your water bill is not quite there. Therefore, we don't, you know, we're not quite there yet. But we're, we're talking about, we're trying to get there. Most of our is either door hangers. If we know that there's an area, we get, we get things out, or we do PSAs. And then, it's just a matter of whether or not the local radio stations and newspapers pick them up. And sometimes, though, that occurs in an area that we're not, we don't know it's an issue. I mean, it, unless somebody complains.
And that's what I, you know, stressed. So, thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bohannon, the questions I have pertain to after you've done some service. I've got a couple of my constituents that have had their driveways torn up and temporarily patched with asphalt on a concrete driveway. Yards kind of re-sodded. To be honest with you, it looked pretty bad. And my question is, when is the follow-up gonna happen to repair it properly? And when does that communication come? Because the one constituent I'm thinking of, he had his driveway and yard done about two and a half weeks ago, and he's heard nothing.
Normally, the crews that are onsite talk to them, all right? When they're there, they say, hey, we're digging this up. We're putting in a temporary patch. We have a, we bid it out every year. We have a contract with asphalt and concrete repair company. And pursuant to the terms of the contract, when the job is completed, we give them notice, and they have 30 days. And that's system-wide. That's in our, we're applying the same standard everywhere we provide service. And they have 30 days from when we give them notice that the job's complete. And then, we do the same thing with follow-up on the sodding and repair of landscape.
So, it's not a done deal?
It's not a done deal.
Because basically, the way you explained it, the crew kind of showed up, did the work, kind of left, and he was like, they said they'd be back, but he hasn't heard anything.
Okay. That's, if you'd get me a exact name and whatever, I mean, my CFO's not here today. I don't think he came on purpose. But, but, one Saturday morning back in July, I said, what are you doing today? And he said, I was gonna play. And I said, no, you're not. I said, meet you at the gas station down here. We're walking door-to-door. We're walking door-to-door." I mean, and we came out here and, I mean, we had a list of people that had concerns and the CFO and I were walking door-to-door knocking on people's doors. I mean, we wanna help, we're here to help serve people. We want them to know we're here. You know, I know they have a tendency to call you guys first. And one of the things we'd like to do is break that because I can't help solve a problem that I don't know about. And so, if we can get them in the habit of if, you know, "Oh, I need to call Tad or Thad or David Sharp who's in charge of our customer service and get them to see what's doing it." And then, call you guys if we don't take care of their problems. So, one of the things I'd ask for you all in response is when somebody calls you, the first question says, "You know what? Have you called Tad or Thad?" And I'd really appreciate it if you do that and give us that opportunity to do them because a lot of times, I don't know about it.
I can pass that on. That's understandable.
Okay.
I do wanna commend you for the amount of investment you've put into this area because you've acquired Ma-Mell Water Management. You, you stated that you sent out, 40% of the letters went out saying, or 40% of the customers had a bill greater?
No, no, no. We sent out 1,400 letters that if their, if their water usage was 40%, 40% greater than their six-month average use.
Okay. And how many of those have been affected by a meter or a leak or something?
Very few. I mean, none of them, none of them, we found leaks inside of houses. We found what, we haven't, we haven't found a defective meter.
Two more questions and then I'll, I'll let you off.
Okay, no, you're doing fine.
Also, I've noticed a number of crews have been out in our ward. I see tape up. I see boards over holes. And my concern is being mainly a residential area, I worry about kids falling into those holes. How long can we expect before some of those areas are repaired?
I'd have to know exactly, I mean, I'm, I'm not, we get to it, it's, you know, we have 37 work orders pending that are open right now. So, I, I think we get to them fairly quickly. Now, one of the things that's really happened that's been kind of interesting with seven inches of rain, we go dig a hole. In fact, this happened, I was out there. We were in a, a gentleman whose yard was wet. It was clear there was water coming from somewhere. We looked at all the meters. We started doing, well, so we dug. And right as we started digging, it started raining. Well, you can't find a leak if it's raining. It just doesn't work. I mean, unless you're gonna dig up a whole bunch and what have you. But when you start using leak detection equipment and you start looking for it, it's really tough to find a leak when it's raining. So, we had to say, "King Zacks, we're out of here. We'll come back when it's not raining." And then, we've had the wettest July in 70 years. So, if, if you have some, if, if there's some areas where I can look at specifically, I'd be happy to answer those questions for you to let you know what's going on there. We know that holes in the ground are hazardous and we try to, safety is one of our primary concerns and we try to address those issues. We don't want that, you know, we don't wanna be on the news anymore than anybody else. And, and kid and bicycle falls in hole is not, that CAW dug is not where we wanna be.
Okay. I'll be happy to, to point a couple of those out.
Fantastic.
And the last question I have is you talked about the transition of water rates on, in March of 18. At that point, will the Ma-Mell Water Management bonds be retired?
Ma-Mell Water Management bonds are already retired.
Okay. So, they're, they're retired. You've assumed that debt.
That's correct.
So, our pricing at that point should be comparable to the rest of the system?
One point six rate.
Huh? Well, it'll be our outside city rate. Of the $25 surcharge that's currently on the system, $4 and, I can get you the exact number, but about $4.80 will fall off. That's the short-term transition debt. The remaining amount of the $25, less the $4.80 will stay on. Some of it's for about another eight-year period and then, there's a long-term debt to pay off the long-term debt.
Okay. And that, that was to support the Ma-Mell initiative?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Timmons?
You answered my last, one of my questions. Yeah. About the water source in March 2018 and the cost. For the, when you go through the new billing system?
Mm-hmm.
Will there be a lot of notification to the residents? You know, it's coming, it's coming, it's, it's here?
Yes. There won't, it'll fairly be, it'll be seamless fairly to them because we're processing the bill on our current billing system. But we will send out, we, we sent out this letter saying, "Here comes the new bill." When we, when we first took over, we said, "Here comes the new bill. Here's what it's gonna look like." And as we transition, we'll send out another bill because we also want people, we have people scan all the bills. We run them through computer differential checks and what have you. But we also want people looking at them. We want people to say, "Hup! CAW's sending out a new format of a bill and what have you. I need to look at it a little more closely because we all know that, you know, there's just a tendency as you're ripping through the bills to open it up and say, "Okay, I owe this much" and move it over." So, we want people to look at them to make sure that as we made the transition. We hope there's not any problems, but we certainly want them to look at them to make sure so we can fix anything. So, we're not finding out about, "Well, you've been doing this for six months." You know, I mean, we need to make sure that we find all those things. So, yes, we'll send out notices to them and we'll make sure that people know that we've transitioned the systems and that they should look at things.
And thank you for coming.
No problem.
Thank you. Alderman Vipressen?
Two things. I'm going to just assume that you had no idea that 20% and 17% of your workforce would be in Ma-Mell after the first five months.
Correct. That's a good assumption.
Thank you. Second, we get phone calls. Could you just quickly say, when we get phone calls, who should we have them call? What's your home number? Thank you very much.
You've got my number.
Thank you, sir.
You want my number?
You bet.
I'm not giving them to the attorney either. If an attorney needs to call anybody, you need to call Dave.
That's all I have. Thank you, Tad.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Alderman Vipressen? Alderman Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I almost, I'm kinda following up on what you said, but I was gonna ask you this anyway. When you were speaking at first, you said that you would like to see us transition from a point where instead of calling us, that they would call you directly. Now, can you provide us maybe through the mayor, a list of various people for situations? For example, if you have a financial situation, talk to a name and a title and a phone number. If you have a problem with this, call this person. Can, can we do that?
We, we can certainly provide that for you. We have our customer service number on every bill. If there's a problem with our customer service and it needs to be escalated, we certainly wanna hear about it and we'll get those, Samantha, you hearing this? We'll get those numbers and contact information to you all.
Well, it might help you. You know, if we had a list like this and they call us, we can say, "Look, here's someone you can call right here."
Perfect.
It makes us look good and it helps you accomplish your goal.
That'd be great. Be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bohannon? We have Mr. Wilkins here also. And, and thank you, Mr. Bohannon, for being here to address the concerns. And most of these were emailed to them in advance, some of the issues and everything because the council members had provided them in advance, so, but-
Appreciate it all very much. Again, if you have anything, please don't hesitate to call me. Please not 2:00 in the morning unless you really need to, but other than that, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilkins, I, I don't know what you've got prepared to present tonight, but the only question that I think that came up basically for y'all was the winter average billing that Mr. Bohannon's already covered, but you might still go into some of the issues that y'all dealt with or something like that.
Well, first of all, Mr. Bohannon came up through the legal profession, so any answers or statements I have won't be near as lengthy, so. And he did address that, that issue. We charge the same rate to all of our customers. It's the same rate. The only difference is in Ma-Mell, the, the meters are reading in gallons and all of our other meters read in 100 cubic feet. So, there's, there may be, it may appear to be a different rate, but it's the same rate. And the winter month's average, and I, I'm not a billing programmer. I don't understand it. The bills look very simple. I mean, you know, they're small and, and there's, looks like there's plenty of room on them. It ought to be easy to do, but apparently, it's not. And we went through that in quite a bit of detail and effort with CAW to try and make that work. And it just, it couldn't be made to work. So, when they switch to that program, that, that all of their other bills go under, then they can make that winter month's average. And I talked to Tad today and he said that the, the data can be imported into that new software. My greatest fear was they'll make that switch and then they won't have the data and we'll have to wait another year. But that's not the case, I've been told. So, that, that is the only issue I was aware of that came from Mayor Watson. I've got Michael Clayton, the civil engineer from my utility with me tonight. And he's very knowledgeable and, and if I'm not available for any of y'all, Michael probably can answer and, and even better than I could. For contacting the utility, the number on the bill is for people that have billing questions. That's the, the best place to go is that number that's on the bill. That'll take them right to the, the billing clerks. And generally, they can answer the question. They're the ones that deal with it every day. The, the main number to the utility is 945-7186. And a, any other kind of a question that somebody might have, if they'll call into that main number and let the, the receptionist direct that call to the appropriate person, it, it helps everybody. They don't, they don't get the runaround. They get to the person that, that they need in a quicker, more efficient manner. I mean, I'd be glad to, to take their calls, but then I'd be trying to get them to, to the appropriate person. So, other than that, we've been very active in the area. We've, we're not as, as far along with our mapping as, as CAW. But we've had crews out here and we've got maybe 35% of, of the system under our mapping system. We've responded to 30 trouble calls in this first five months. We've made 21-point repairs. We've televised 118,974 lineal feet of gravity sewer line. And we've cleaned 120,764 lineal feet of gravity sewer line. So, that's a maybe, well, I don't know, 23, 24 miles of pipeline, which is about 20% of the, the collection system in the first five months. So, we've been very, very proactive. We've also rehabilitated 81 manholes. What they're, what they're finding is that the collection system's in pretty good shape. The, the 21-point repairs that they made were, were doozies. They needed to be made. The 81 manholes that needed to be repaired, you know, they, they were taking on water and, and needed to be repaired. Our biggest challenges have been with the, the mechanical parts of the system, the pump stations and the treatment plant. And the, y'all have about 25 pump stations and my staff has been whipping those into pretty good shape. So, we're, we're about caught up on that. And the treatment plant, we've made some mechanical repairs there. And the first, y'all know the, the long-term plan for the treatment is to divert the water to White Oak. And we've awarded, just recently awarded the contract for the first leg of that process. And that's an extension of a 36-inch gravity interceptor up to White Oak Bio. And, and so, that will, construction will begin within the next, hopefully, 30 days. But they've been awarded the contract and they, they're getting their bonds and insurance together to start that work, so. That's really about all I have unless you have questions.
When, when would you have that switch over to the White Oak Bio? When's your target date on that?
It'll be about two years.
About March or something?
It, it's, I would do it today if I could, but it'll probably take two years. And, and I mean, that's a, a number that has so many variables to it. Things go right, that would be an aggressive schedule to do.
Any, any major surprises as far as personnel leaving or, or just something that needed to be fixed or anything?
Well, I thought I was gonna be lynched by my personnel, but once we got past that, they're, they're very settled in now and they realize that, that they had the capability to do it. We added some staff. Only two came from C, or from Ma-Mell Water Management. I ended up leasing two, two operators for, I don't know what, three months, maybe?
In the marriage when we did that.
And then, my staff caught on to it and, and picked it up and, and we're operating the treatment plant with our staff now. We did add a couple of Ma-Mell Water Management. Proud to have them. They've been real assets to, to our utility. And it's, it's just invaluable having somebody that's been there in this system and can, knows the system and can get right to the issues, so. Other than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's a pretty simple question. You spoke about the mapping of all the man, I guess, the manhole covers and all, all the system. And is that why there's the green marks on all the manhole covers? Those are the ones that you've covered or?
Yes, sir. That's, if they, if they touch that manhole, they'll paint that. And that shows that they, they've been there and they pick up whatever information, whatever job order took them there, whether it was just to, to take a GPS reading or to, to rehab it or whatever, clean it. Likely, that, that was a lot of it, the cleaning and televising. They've been over a bunch of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, yeah, I, is there any more questions for Mr. Wilkins? Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Wilkins. And I do wanna say that anytime I've called Central Arkansas Water or North Rock Wastewater, it doesn't matter, I get, if I don't reach them directly, then they get back to me just as quick as they can. And I don't hesitate to either call Tad or Thad or whoever I need to call up there. And same thing with Michael Clayton back there. I probably talk to Michael as much as I talk to Mark. But Michael and I've dealt with some service line issues and some things like that, but they've been real responsive and tried to satisfy the citizens' concern. And, and I've not seen anything as far as hesitancy to come out here to take care of a citizen's complaint or issue that they're having. So, been a pleasure to work with both staffs so far. And I look for that to continue. Before y'all leave though, we do have one public comment card from a gentleman that wants to speak on CAW and North Rock Sewer. So, at this time, we'll hear from Mr. Birch Johnson.
My name is Birch Johnson. I live at 38 Fairway Woods Circle. And I came here tonight to compliment Central Arkansas Water and how well they have responded. But also, when I'm looking at it and saying they, they've been out here, they've been working and, you know, fixing things and doing a lot of things right. But I wanna explain something. We just gave, excuse me, we just, they just gave them 7,300 billings a year. So, that's a pretty good increase. I, I think he said 8%, but I don't know what percent it is, but 7,300 billings. Over the next 10 years, thereabouts, and I'll sit down with a number and go over it with you, the people of Ma-Mell, it's gonna pay $14 million. I mean, we're paying for what we're getting. I think it'll be worth it in the long run, you know? And I just wanted to say that. You know, we fought with Central Arkansas, or excuse me, Ma-Mell Water Management- You know, we fought with Central Arkansas, or excuse me, Maumell Water Management, but now's a chance to get with them because they're working hard to try to correct something. I would like to correct one thing about, my daughter had a leak out in front of her house and they fixed it. It's leaking again. Just, she doesn't live at the same address. Just, I wrote that down real quick. But anyway, it's been, it's a good deal for Maumell. It's a good deal for Central Arkansas Water. Now, I gotta go over the other side. I don't understand this. I understand this average billing and everything like that. But my sewage bill in January was thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents. February seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents. In March, fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. In April, ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. Forty dollars and thirty-seven cents in May and sixty-five dollars this month. Now, that's a pretty big heap. And if everybody is getting that kind of increase, Maumell, North Little Rock wastewater got a gold mine. They just are blu, busting us. Now, I don't, I can't, I can't have any way to sit down and compare other bills. That's my bill. And I say they got a gold mine. And hey, they, their only answer is average billing, uh, average usage. Well, we can't get average uses, so I gotta pay this for twelve months before they can get an average use and everybody else does. Now, the lady that came last time down here, Judy, they had said, said she used something like twelve thousand gallons of water. You know she didn't use that. She lives by herself. Hey, they showed me using eighteen gallons. So somebody, something was wrong. But anyway, I think Central Arkansas Water's working hard. I'm not sure about what's going on with North Little Rock wastewater. And I think you better look at them close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. There's, I have no other comment cards on this item and we do appreciate Central Arkansas Water and North Rock Wastewater for coming out today. And we're not going to make y'all stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll let y'all leave if y'all want to. So enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item that we have is approval of the minutes of the July eighteenth meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes of July the eighteenth. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And at this time, we have a card from Ms. Alicia Gillen.
Hopefully I can talk about something more exciting than water. Alicia Gillen, representing the Maumell Area Chamber of Commerce, one-one-five Audubon Drive in Maumell. I wanted to come and present to you, I'm very excited, the Maumell Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its very first festival right here in Maumell. It's called the Bash on the Boulevard. It's on September the tenth. It's a Saturday. It'll start at noon and go till ten o'clock at night. Throughout the entire day, oh, first of all, this is a free admission to all residents and also for visitors wanting to visit our beautiful city. It will have something for everyone. It will have business vendors, over eighty business vendors, have arts and crafts, a kid's zone, an Arkansas crafted beer garden, a game day TV sports viewing area. We will also be putting on the Miss Maumell Pageant during this event. We'll have food trucks, local and regional entertainment, and a lot of games for the kids to participate in. We hope that this will really connect our residents with our businesses. I know that sometimes we forget that we're a small town. And so I really want to really expand upon that and really remind people to start shopping local and knowing who exactly is in our community. Is there any questions that you have about the event?
Alderman Vipers?
Location wise, where will this all take?
It is located in the Town Center Shopping Center, which is a shopping center where the Maumell Chamber of Commerce is located. We'll be, I actually have a map, which I can send to everyone. It'll be fenced off, the entire area will be fenced off, basically lining from about where Dreamy Spoon is all the way across, incorporating into the Crylike Building as well, and then the natural barrier of the building.
Is it mainly, is it an outdoor event?
It's an all-day outdoor event, yes.
So we need a prayer for no rain that day.
I'm on September.
I would like everyone to pray for no rain, please.
I'm scheduled to pray four times at this Miss Maumell Pageant.
Yes.
Four times. I don't know why, but there's four prayers going up and I'm going to be there, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Alderman Vipers. And Alderman Timmons?
Alicia, I know you've been working really hard on this. I know you didn't just start this. I know this is a year-long project for you, so anything I can do, let me know.
Thank you. I really do appreciate it. At this time, I really just need your support to getting this out to your constituents, letting them know about the event. We really want to monopolize on those home-based businesses, you know, those, those entrepreneurial spirits and getting them exposed and in front of the residents and being able to get them some, showcase all the great talent that we have within our community. Also the local businesses that we do have here and that we all frequent, being able for them to really be hands-on, get them outside of their office and meet some residents. Any other questions?
What was the date?
September the tenth. It is an Arkansas away game. They will be playing T C U. And again, we will be broadcasting that.
Alderman Mosley?
I'd just like to thank you for the enthusiasm you seem to bring to the, the job of Chairman.
You know, I like to have a good time.
And if you, if you take the Sunday Arkansas Democrat Gazette and the River Valley Edition, it was featured on Sunday, the Bash on the Boulevard. So top, above the fold, everything. So, yep, so a lot of advertising on that, so.
Yes, we're very excited. And a lot of the funds that we raise at the Chamber really do help promote our economic development in the area and our entrepreneurial programs. So we really just want to focus on giving back to our community and this is the best way that I could show them. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, see you guys on the tenth.
Thank you, Alicia. Next item is the financial statement review and that's done at the second meeting. Next item is procedural motion. We need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Still move.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve all, or read all resolutions, ordinances by title only. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the second reading ordinance number nine oh nine, Team Summit LLC to do business with the city. Alderman Timmons?
I'm abstaining from any voting or discussion on this ordinance, nine oh nine.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you would read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Maumell, County Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number nine oh nine, an ordinance permitting Alderman Timmons to conduct business with the City of Maumell, Arkansas and prescribing the extent of this authority.
Okay, this ordinance was on the agenda on the last, at our last council meeting, so it's now in second reading. If you'll note, there was a statement at the end that we would ask for a third reading and emergency clause at this meeting. But if Alderman Timmons has abstained from it, Alderman Lewis is absent, I would assume Alderman Mosley would not vote for that because it's been his practice in the past to not accelerate any ordinance reading. And so I would, there's no reason to request the third reading then because we would only have five votes for that. And, and I'm assuming that.
You're assuming correctly.
Okay, all right. Alderman Mosley, thank you. But is there any discussion on ordinance nine oh nine? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance, under new business, we have ordinance nine ten, amending chapter fourteen of Building and Buildings Regulations. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Mr. Mayor, I'll need to recuse on this one. I'll abstain from discussion or, or voting on it. I think I have a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, all right.
And if you don't mind, I'll just leave the room here.
Okay, and do you want, then do you want me to take, do you want us to take you off as a sponsorship? In the, in the, in the last meeting, you mentioned that you'd be willing to sponsor this ordinance, so.
I think, I think you were the one that drafted it.
I did, yes, sir.
It, as, as long as people know that you drafted it, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, actually, Mr. City Attorney drafted it. I gave him some language I wanted to see in there, but he actually drafted it, so I don't want to take credit away from him. All right, thank you.
Hold up here.
Okay.
It's nine oh, nine one eight?
Okay, ordinance nine ten is the ordinance that we developed, and I will say we because I drafted the language that I wanted to see in there. And then Aldem, or City Attorney Norris put it in legal terms and, and tried to make sure, and then he also corrected just some minor things. But the main emphasis that we were changing is under section three. If you look at that under B where one, it talks about section one-one, section one-four dash one-one-twelve-nine shall not apply to fences erected before November one, two thousand and six, along or near the right-of-way of North Odom Boulevard and Maumell Boulevard and Rolling Oaks Edition Phase One, Two, and Three. Such fences may be repaired, replaced, or reconstructed in the location that the fence was located on November the first, two thousand and six. So that was the, that was my language that I asked him to work on and place there. So it's specifically limited to North Odom or Maumell Boulevard and specifically located to Rolling Oaks Edition Phase One, Two, or Three. So it's very location specific. There was a, Mr. Morley had also, since we were amending the fence ordinance, Mr. Morley had also brought up a couple of items. And so that's why there's some other changes, such as in section two, talking about shall be no taller than a six-foot fence. So just to, and must be constructed. So they're trying to clear up some language there. And then under section five, it talks about no gate wider than a five, than five foot shall be constructed in a rear or side yard fence when vehicle access is not permitted from that direction. So basically, we didn't want to allow someone to put in a drive-through gate if they live on necessarily, let's say, the Odoms. Because Odoms do not allow direct access to a yard, okay? And they would also almost always have to cross a pathway to do that. Or in a lot of cases, they would, or a ditch. So, or they'd have to drive down a pathway to get to their fence locations. And so this would be only a new fence construction or repair. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't go back and tell someone they have to remove their drive-through gate. It's only when they repair it or bring it up to standards again. And so, and then also there was, there was a kind of a, at the very end, section four, there were some things where there was two different ways to, to basically request a variance or to appeal a decision. And so this is cleaning that area up in section four. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You cleared up the question I had. It was on section five about the.
Oh, the, the five, the, the no gate wider than five foot.
I know that we've had that in the past for people doing construction on pools and things like that and.
Well, but, and we still will allow that. They're just going to have to take the fence down is what they're going to have to do. And we're not going to stop that from occurring. It's just that we don't want the regular access through a back gate.
Like moving their boat in and out.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. That's what I need to know.
Yeah, no, there, there was still, there are, there are ways that people can still access their rear yards if they will contact Public Works and then they, let them come look at it. And then once the work is done, they call them back and that way they can re-inspect a pathway or the green space area to make sure it hadn't been damaged during the construction process.
Perfect.
And you had mentioned accessory structures in the last meeting, how we're going to deal with that. At Mr. Attorney's recommendation, we didn't want to deal with it while we're dealing with fences because this is the fence. It's two separate sections of the code. So just wanted to make that aware, you aware of that also. Didn't forget about it, just felt like it was better addressed at a different ordinance.
I assume that when it was, because those, you want to keep those two separate things.
It, it could have been confusing if we put it all together, yes, sir.
I, I agree. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on ordinance nine ten? Okay, if someone could let Alderman Mosley know who can come back in the room. All right, the next item is resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor to explore Selling Park on the River, I believe is what that should say, or of selling.
Explore selling.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two, a resolution requesting that the mayor explore the feasibility of Selling Park on the River and present those findings to the Maumell City Council.
Okay, this is Alderman Holt's ordinance, or resolution, so I will let him address why he brought it forth.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did counsel with you and with the city attorney very briefly as to my overall thoughts and I compliment the city attorney on drafting the, the request. This certainly is not a vote in favor of selling the Park on the River at all. It does nothing more, and I'll defer to the city attorney to sort of explain the, the details about it. Without going into a lot of details, in last year, at the point that we renewed the contract, I had requested information from Ms. Thompson as to a five-year background on the financial status. She gave me all of those items. I wanted to know a couple of things and she let me know that the Leasee is not a nonprofit organization, that we are not furnished a yearly audit from the Team Summit, that the Park on the River audit is included in the city's yearly audit. I went through the audit, but not being a CPA, I had no idea what I was looking at. So wasn't able to find it. I also, I am aware that Birch, Mayor Johnson, this was his original idea and wanted to have it. So I had a discussion with he and I met for coffee and just wanted to know that I did review it with him and, and let him know that I was going to request this. And he certainly gave me his blessing that if that's what he wanted to do, well, he had no objection to it. And I felt like I was obligated to do that. Without going into other further details on it, I would rather wait to see what the council decides and if we're permitted to vote on this and the mayor comes back with a clarification or recommendation, then we can discuss the details as to whether or not we want to pursue it or not. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Holt. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Holt, you said that you had mentioned it before in the past, but to, for me, it just seemed like this came out of nowhere. I guess I wasn't paying attention. I've been accused of that many times by my wife. But I feel like we have, you know, a, a beautiful park there and there's other things that we do with that park access, like boat ramps and people go down and take pictures along the river and they, they use other parts of that parks on the river. And I, I just, I don't think I could support selling off or getting rid of any kind of parks within the Maumell community because I think that's exactly what people are looking for as an amenity. You know, whether we allow to continue to lease that property, that's another discussion. But as far as selling or getting rid of a park, I, I wouldn't want to have anything to do with that. Thank you very much.
May I reply to that, if that'd be all right, or?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I respect that and, and you know, there's a lot of wherewithal. What, part of what I had asked for, that the amount of the bond to purchase the property was three million sixty thousand dollars. However, the bond was rolled over and it also was part of the police station and the courts. The bonds were then refunded with the two thousand and seven bonds and subsequently refunded with the two thousand and twelve bonds, which was also included in the series of two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. I asked how much are we paying on that? And Ms. Thompson said, our yearly payment on our series twelve bonds ranges from four hundred and eighty to five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year to go to, to year twenty thirty-seven. I have both the original contract and the present contract. If everyone has not actually read the contract with no offense to anyone whatsoever, the property is not being used per the conversation I had with Mayor Johnson for what it was originally intent, or intended. And as we read the contract, there are specific limitations. I could go through that, but I was going to not try to push too hard on that tonight. Simply just. to not try to push too hard on that tonight, simply just to permit the mayor to have an opportunity to review it. And we can always go back on it, but the City of Maumell is not being, it is not being promoted for the purpose of, you know, the people to go down there and use it. I don't know what percentage, how we gauge how many people even know about it. There is supposed to be a sign posted in a conspicuous location, so people will know when it is being used. So I, I don't mean to be critical. I'm just trying to analyze. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Maumell, as everyone agrees. I'm not suggesting that I'm the only one. So, but if it is something that, that the taxpayers are not getting their money's worth out of, I believe the city attorney told me that we'd have to have it appraised and see what the value is and some details about that. And if he would like to make comment, I'd be glad to yield to his, his thoughts about it, to explain what we would have to go through in order to look at it. And indeed, it would be a realtor and a fee and all that kind of thing.
I think that issue came up, Alderman Holt, as, as I was trying to figure out how to word this resolution and what sort of information you might want the mayor to specifically look for. And as a hypothetical, I said you'd probably want to know the appraised value of the property and a few other things like that. It, it, it was really an attempt to sort out what you were looking for.
Okay. Alderman Vapurzen?
There are only public water access in Maumell. I don't think we want to lose that, whether or not we want, we would entertain the house portion, but then your subdividing property, then you've got right-of-way issues, and that's a difficult issue as well. I think maybe something that we should discuss, I don't know if it's ever been discussed, but it'd be really nice, what Alderman Holt said, to have a really impressive sign out there. Hey, you know, Maumell Park on the River. What do we have now, Mayor?
We have just a typical roadside-type sign, but we are working on one. The, we have the, it's similar to the sign that's on the tennis center over here. We have one that's being created. The problem is, is we actually were hit by lightning, and our sign cutter went down. It actually, it routes the wood out of a board. Basically, it's, it's a sign board that's thick like this and cuts it in there. So the only one that I, well, some of the neighborhood signs are made out of that sign machine, and so, but Keith Via, he's working on that, and him and Philip have been working to try to get a different sign put down there for the, that's a better part of this year, and we had to spend about four thousand dollars to get the machine repaired, so.
It's just, it's not easy to find if you don't know where it's at. It's, it's not well signed out, I guess you could say, where it's at. So I'd, I'd be in favor of that, but I, I can't be in favor of losing our only public water access. We do have a private, but we don't have a public, so.
Thank you.
And this is the only place we can talk about it, so I'd like to hear everybody. Dissertation, please.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Vapurzen hit pretty hard on one of the things that I, or the, the point that I was going to make, but I'm gonna carry on a little bit. I do have a problem with subdividing the property, and I think that would become necessary, and correct me if I'm wrong, and this may be an issue for the mayor or for the city attorney. But I know that Game and Fish Commission was involved in building that ramp, that public ramp, and I wonder if we, if we are not obligated to maintain or retain that portion of that property, Park on the River.
We would have to pay back any funds that they had spent produce, building the ramp and the parking in that area down there.
Okay.
So we'd have to repay those funds. I had not planned to subdivide because you're gonna, well, I mean, the, the access to it and some things like that are gonna be contrary to, well, and Alderman Holt had said, sell Park on the River, so to me, that's the entire acreage down there. So unless he tells me something differently now.
Do you have even a ballpark number of how much game and fish contributed to it?
I believe it was a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So we would have to repay that. We've had this discussion many times in five and a half years I've been sitting up here, and I'm not particularly in favor of getting rid of Park on the River. And I agree with Alderman Vapurzen, that is the one public access that we have, and I've talked to you, Mayor, a few times. I've got a group of fishermen that bug me all the time about opening hours and what have you. So I know it's being used, and I'd hate to take that away from them. So I'm, I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of this, so.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Timmons?
I guess I should have abstained from...
Okay, all right. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I, I'm not, this is, this is gonna be something that we'll, we'll put some thought in, but I see no problem with, with taking a look at this every once. Well, I'm glad you brought it up. And I don't know exactly how I'm gonna vote on this yet, and I, I think my main concern is the same as, as the other two or three Aldermen, just the, there, there were so many years of saying, gosh, we've got to have access to the river on a boat ramp, and, and so I think that's something we, we definitely have to have as a priority to try to keep. I was gonna ask the mayor, what would be involved in this feasibility study that you would do, exploring the feasibility and the costs and the benefits and all that? How would you do it?
Well, Alderman Holt brought up a few of the issues we would have, is there was, bond money was used to purchase this property. And so the two thousand and five bond issue was a little over three million dollars, but that included police and courts building and the Park on the River. As best we could tell, and this is notes from two thousand and five, so, and they aren't my notes, so in talking with Mr. Spivey and Mr. Trumper, we think the property was purchased for somewhere around one point six million dollars, maybe one million six twenty-five, I believe is what it was purchased for. And so in two thousand and five, or, excuse me, two thousand and five, bond money was, bond money was done, but I think it paid back the city for money they'd spent already, because you can go back a year and pay for land that you purchased. So that's kind of what the history I've got. In two thousand and twelve, on that three, little over three million, we owed two million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we did...
Two million how many?
Two million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We'd paid back about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Wow.
In seven years, because it goes to twenty thirty-seven. You pay a lot of interest on the front end on these things. So that was refunding the two thousand and five issue, and it also refunded a two seven, two thousand and seven issue and combined them into one issue. So now we're taking the three million dollars and another five million dollar one that was done in two thousand and seven, merging them together, and then refunding it in two thousand and twelve. So then this is, this is just taking the same equivalent. So in two thousand and sixteen, and this is not, this could not be verified, but let's say in two thousand and sixteen, that three million is now about two point three million dollars that we've paid, that we still owe. So we still owe about two million three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If you use that same percentage on the original purchase price, one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we still owe one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on Park on the River.
Plus an additional hundred and fifty.
Plus, up to a hundred and fifty to one seventy-five, yes.
So it would be washed.
Yeah. Now, they, these are numbers that we were getting from notes and everything else, and I, what I, what I told Mr. Trumper is that if this passed tonight, I would need good numbers. I mean, I'd need documentation and all that. So that would be the first thing I would do, is get that numbers, and then we would look at what property in that area's been selling for. I don't know that it would, I mean, we could go to a full-blown appraisal. We'd have to pay for that, and there'd be money have to be spent, so I'd have to come to the council to request that if you do want an appraisal as part of the feasibility study. But you could look at the other properties in the area and get a maybe ballpark, but before you got to the point of actually saying you're gonna sell it, and then the other aspect is, how do we sell it then? So I guess that would be part of the feasibility. Will we put it up for low bid? Would we put it up, you know, and just put a for-sale sign out there and say, contact the mayor? I, I don't know. So that would be a decision that would have to be made also. I, I don't think you'd get a lot of traffic if we just put a for-sale sign out there. I think you'd have to push it somehow, either with advertising and newspapers, radio advertisements like I hear on some land out in Maumell. But, 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 or we could just put it up for open bid and just see what the market will bring in. And you don't have to accept the bids either. So what, the feasibility study would probably give several ways to possibly sell the property in it also. So that's, that's my, that's what I've envisioned the feasibility study would say. Now, Alderman Holt may say, I want this in there also, so I'd have discussions with him if this passes, so. Or anybody else?
I've, I've gone around and around on Park on the River, too. I've gotten a lot of constituents that call over the years saying, what, what is the deal and that sort of thing. And so last year, about a year ago, I, I did some of the same things you've been doing, is I went around and talked to the mayor, and I talked to Ms. Timmons about the thing, and I understand it better, and also, though, don't have any better use for the thing. And it was one of those things, I actually sent out an email to all my constituents, if anybody has a better use for this thing than what we're doing, let us know. Didn't hear anything from anybody. And to me, a better use would almost be just a different type of thing, leasing it to a restaurant or an entertainment center or something like that, but nobody's come up with anything. And maybe, maybe that's what we ought to be concentrating on, is putting the word out, but I don't, I don't know about that either. So I guess, I'm glad you brought it up, Jess. I, I just don't know, I don't know what we need to do at this point, though. And I am concerned about the boat ramp. That's all I've got. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see, Alderman Kelly? All right. Well, you hadn't got to speak yet, so we'll go to you before Alderman Vapurzen.
Thank you, Mayor. An answer to your question there, Alderman Vapurzen. I don't support selling Park on the River. I don't see any monetary advantage to it. We do have citizens that use it. It gives us water access, and perhaps the debate is to, to talk about how to market it better for our constituents. I don't see any advantage to selling it, guys, especially if we're gonna break even. I can't imagine it's worth that much more. I would like to point out, though, that as we refunded these bonds, did we get lower interest rates?
We, on the two thousand and twelve, we levelized our payment. I think if you heard when Alderman Holt said Ms. Thompson had given him, we paid between four eighty and five fifteen. What we did is those, those payments were increasing, and so we leveled those, is what we did. And we, I think we did get a better interest rate also. I mean, it was, it was a combination of both of those.
But at this point, I see no reason to support it.
And let me say one other thing. I didn't have these numbers when Alderman Holt came to talk to me. I got these numbers today, and I've been trying to get them for over a week, but it just, the, they're having to go back and find the files from two thousand and five in their offices and dig out paper files and look at this stuff up. So I didn't have this, these numbers exactly when I talked to Alderman Holt about two weeks ago, I think it was. Alderman Vapurzen?
Real quick, just going back, do you know how much money the city has put into Park on the River, other than fish and game since two thousand and five? How much money have we put into it?
Well...
I know you don't.
I, I, I know we put a new roof on. I know we've put an air conditioning system in. The roof was...
Defense, the dock, all of that?
Yeah. Well, the, the, the fence we put in, the dock was put in by the game and fish. So the dock was put in. The, the white fence, the city put in, the, the privacy fence we put in, the parking lot, the city put in, the upper parking lot.
Since two thousand and five. So we're not just talking, breaking even. We could be talking...
Well, and let me say one thing, too, is part of the funds that we collect from the rental of the park, because we get, we get a monthly rate, and then we get twenty-five percent, that's what's helped pay for the roof. That's what's helped pay for the air conditioning. It didn't pay for the parking lot. I don't think it paid for the wooden fence that's down on the bottom, but it helps pay for some of the normal maintenance that we'd be doing on that house if it was just a city park and, and there wasn't anybody leasing it. So I just want, yeah, so there is an offset, too, to, to having it leased out.
I hate to say this, but, and I know you're not gonna say anything, are you? Look at you. Loose lips sink ships. I almost wonder if the weak link on that chain isn't that house. We've, if you've ever been in there, it's not conducive to large venues. It's, it's limited. If you want to have a party in there of a hundred and fifty, I don't, I don't know. What, what is the limit there, Mayor? What's the occupancy?
Well, seated, I believe it's just a little over a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty up to, but, I mean, with tables, with round tables. Now, if you just put them in chairs, you can get more in there than that. But I don't know the exact numbers now. I know Ms. Timmons does, but I, I don't, or Alderman Timmons does, but I don't know those exact numbers.
So, I mean, we're almost at a...
I can tell you, it's one twenty if you have seating chairs set up, one fifty if you don't have any seating chairs set up.
One twenty, one fifty.
But it's so chopped up. You know, you almost wonder if you had a big, open venue there, how much more access and how much more interest you would have. I would have to ask, how many people contact you that you have to turn away? Can I have this conversation?
If, if Ms. Pat will come up front to the microphone, you can.
My apologies.
State your name and address for record, please.
Pat Walker, twenty-seven Hudson Bay Drive.
Do you have very many people that come to you who are interested in Park on the River, but it's too small of a venue for them?
Yes, I have quite a few people who come and say the venue is too small.
Beautiful location. I don't know what our parking meets the standard for, Mayor. I know that there's a parking ratio, but it seems like there's ample parking, but I don't know that ratio if we'd have to add more. And again, these are just wild thoughts to go nowhere perhaps with, but if we had, if we had, if we had something that could seat two hundred or two hundred and fifty people, maybe we'd get a lot more people that are interested in it.
Definitely. And even the parking lot, it, it only accommodates, I think, one twenty.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And the, they do have events down on the bottom that could, that seat more, but it's when they have to bring tents in, and they bring chairs in, and they do the outdoor wedding. But the problem with that is, it's weather. You're, you're, you could have an issue with weather, but...
Right, and there are no bathroom facilities on the bottom.
Right. And the bathroom facilities up top, nor the kitchen are really commercial.
Right.
And so you're very limited as to what you can do.
Right.
So, thank you. Sorry.
And the, the bathroom situation on the bottom, we can't really deal with because it's in the floodplain, floodway area. So the bathroom is always gonna be part of the way up the hill if we ever do one, so, yep. Alderman Mosley?
Do you have any, any idea whatsoever how many, how many accesses to the river that take place a month or something like that? Is there any way to count, or do you know? Any clue?
Uh, no, I, there, I would have to put somebody down there basically to monitor that, because if we put a traffic countdown, that wouldn't tell us anything.
Unless you put it on the actual ramp.
Well, but there's cars will pull down and park on the ramp. I mean, I've seen them. I mean, they just pull down there and looking at the water or whatever, but, uh, yeah, it'd be something like that, but it's probably, I mean, there's, it probably averages one a day during good weather. And the reason I say that is because there's times I've gone there, there's three or four trailers parked down there on a weekend. So, I mean, it probably averages one a day, but I've been there on a Tuesday, and there'd be two boats there, and a lot of times, the access is after five until eight o'clock during summer months. So it, it's, it's real sporadic, so I don't know, I mean, and some fishermen may get there the minute the park opens, because I, they, Alderman Saunders knows we get calls that the gate didn't open up early enough for them, and they're waiting to get down there to launch early, and then they may be gone by ten o'clock in the morning. So it's, you can't just say, be there at this time and count the vehicles down there because they come and go so often. But I, I've been down there on numerous occasions and seen definitely more than one trailer parked on the bottom, and it's probably a dozen that I've seen more than one parked down there, and then a lot of times, I'll see one down there. Almost every time I go to an event out there during the summer, when it's a chamber event or something like that, there's people using the ramp down there. And the other thing that you don't see, or that you don't notice a lot, there are a lot of people go down there and fish on that dock also. They use the dock, or they walk on down and fish down along the bank. That's a pretty deep bank that's along that bank there, and...
Has that, has that dock been repaired since the flood?
It has been, yes, sir. In the last month or so, yeah, yeah.
Is that part of, is that our dock, or is that the?
Well...
Game and Fish?
It's our dock now. The, the, the Game and Fish told me they put it in for us, but it, we're responsible for maintenance. They fixed it the first time it got tore up, just because it was, like, within the first year they'd put it in, but they told me this time, no, go back and read your contract. But they told me this time, no, go back and read your contract with us. It's your job to maintain it. So we had to get, we had to bring it out of the water completely, make repairs to it and then put it back in. And Parks and Rec, it took a while to get that done. We, we didn't have the necessarily equipment that the, the guys that put it in the first time did to get it in the water. But we got it done and, and fixed it. We've also changed the way it's done a little bit. We, we don't have spud poles going in the ground anymore. That seemed to be the problem. Logs would come down river and get caught on the poles that were anchoring it. So we're anchoring it now with cables so that it can hopefully just float up and float down. Uh, we've also removed a float out from underneath the walkway to give it a passageway so hopefully debris and logs can go through there. Cause there, it's basically a, the walkway going out to the dock was a dam. So a log would come through there and hit that area and it couldn't get out because the dock extended out and it couldn't spin out of there. If it would hit the dock, a lot of times it would spin. I mean, I sat there and watched them. It hit the end of the dock and then spun out toward the river. But if it got inside the dock where the walkway was, it couldn't get out of that area. And then just the water pressure just continued to push against it. But we actually, we had employees down there trying to push logs down to get them to go under the dock and everything. So very, very hard task to try to do.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna mention some of the fishing trends that, that you had already mentioned. But I do have one other thing that we as a council should keep in mind. Now, over the years, uh, we have somewhat promoted Maumell as a river city. Now, it's, it doesn't seem right to me to say we're a river city when we have no access to the water and that's our only public access. So, and that's our best city property frontage on the river that I know of. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Vapersen?
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-two.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-two. I do have one public comment card that was handed in after the discussion started, so we'd like to hear from them at this time. Uh, Ms. Jan Ho.
I did not come prepared to speak. Jan Ho, one thirty-four Apple Blossom Loop. So I hope you'll allow me to wander a little bit. We worked hard to get access to the river property. And I would hate to see us sell it when there is no urgent need for the money. If we, you know, we've got money in the bank. If we ever needed money in the bank, you, that might be something you'd look at, but we don't need it right now. We don't, reverence was made to the taxpayers getting their money's worth. We don't get a cent from Willistine or Valencia. Those are public parks, just like Park on the River. I will agree with you that maybe it's a little underused because people don't always know where it's at. But I can tell you that I go down there a lot. And I've never gone down there when there wasn't two or three people down there. Sometimes they're just looking at the water or having lunch. And if we let the event center go, where would we have things like, uh, the policemen's, um, get-togethers or the, uh, police academy, uh, when we have those events there? We don't have anywhere else in Maumell that's big enough for those. I might remind you that we get X number of freebies to use it a month. And also I would remind you that when we did the seven projects for the city, the boat launch actually came in ahead of one or two of those we did. But it wasn't feasible to do it at the time because we didn't have any place to do it. And to get the boat launch down there certainly was a, a plus to a lot of citizens. I just, I just don't want you to just indiscriminately say, it's not used, so let's just get rid of it because it is used. And I agree, it could be used more. But think long and hard before you decide to even investigate selling it because it is a prime prize for the city of Maumell.
Thank you, Ms. Ho. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two. Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, five to one, is that? Okay. And one abstention? All right. One to five, I guess is how it was actually voted. Okay. And I will, I will say one thing, uh, and, uh, Ms. Ho knows this. When I first became mayor, I wanted to sell Park on the River. And she came to me and told me, you're not gonna sell Park on the River. So, uh, she's been fighting this battle since two thousand seven, I know. So, uh, she, she was one of the ones that, that was involved in the purchase of it. And so I know it's very dear to her. And I've come to enjoy that area and I have no desire personally to sell it now because we do have river access. We actually do have a place where we can launch boats in Maumell. Uh, next item is mayor's comments. Um, Alderman Saunders had requested at the last meeting while we were discussing the, uh, inter-local agreement with the, uh, Rock Region Metro, uh, that we get a ridership information. And so they provided us with more than just ridership information. They, they, they gave us a lot of information, so that's included. But I did wanna touch on a couple of things that, uh, uh, they had talked about. They'd saved us a little bit of money, uh, in our funding fee. It went down seven hundred dollars and, which was a one point four percent decrease. And then they also, uh, they listed the ridership, uh, at twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty-two rides, uh, that were taken, which represents point four seven percent of the metro bus ridership. So we're not even a half a percent in the entire ridership. But, uh, we, our contribution is only point two eight percent. So not quite doubled, but, uh, you know, as far as the, the, our share, we're paying for about half of the percentage incomparable. I mean, that means nothing as far as what's the rate back. Uh, but I did look at it. It's about four dollars a rider. It, our, our, the amount we pay, the forty-eight thousand dollars divided by the twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty-two riders is about four dollars a trip. It's what that costs the city of Maumell. Uh, and I will tell you, last Monday night, uh, Rock Region Metro did a public meeting at the community center. It was not well-attended, but there was a rider there that she rides the bus every single day. And she was very appreciative of it and she was even talking. I do wanna tell you one story. She mentioned that she gets on at the community center and if it's dark when the bus gets there to drop her off, if her husband's not in the parking lot waiting on her to pick her up, the bus driver won't let her get off the bus. Uh, so he, he waits till her husband gets there, cause he's just a few minutes away. Even if, even if she has to call him to remind him she's already there or something like that. So, I mean, that's just a, that's, that's one little thing, but it kinda meant something to me. That's the, you know, the care that, cause she said, we get to be friends with the drivers, you know? They're friends. They're, they're almost like family. And so she pointed that out in that meeting, which I thought was very nice. But then if you look on the very, uh, or, yeah, the last page, uh, they're listing the five busiest stops in Maumell and the Jess Odom Community Center, which I would've said would've been number one, is not. It's actually Maumell Boulevard and Crystal Hill Road. And I'm assuming that's because of the Walmart that's there and the other businesses that are in that area. But Jess Odom Community is then second. Uh, so. And the Edgewood Drive and Valencia Drive, I see a woman getting on there almost every morning at that bus stop. So, yeah. And one getting off, actually, so. Um, all right, uh, that's all the comments I was gonna make. Uh, I do wanna say one thing and, and I don't know, some people know it, some people don't, I guess. I mean, it's not common knowledge, but we had a, we had a little bit of a scare at Lake Valencia on Saturday afternoon around one o'clock. A, a fisherman reported an oil sheen on the water. Uh, and so, uh, our fire department responded, uh, Plaski County OEM responded, uh, emergency management, uh, responded. ADQ was contacted. We never could determine a source, uh, where the oil was coming from. It was coming out of a pipe. It's coming out of one of the city pipes, but never could determine a source. They, uh, looked at the construction site of Academics Plus, never could determine a source over there. They went back today and looked at that site again, uh, still couldn't determine a source. So we really don't know where it came from. But what I, the main reason I wanna mention it is I'm two hours away, but I placed a call to Embacore, which is one of our industrial partners out here. And they make imbiber beads. And imbiber beads soak up hydrocarbons. And so we call, I called them, uh, thanks to Ms. Keller providing me a contact. And they sent two employees out and they put socks down in the ditches to try to prevent the hydrocarbons from getting into the lake. And there was a little bit of an oil sheen still in the ditch, but no more got into the lake. And after about an hour, the lake water dissipated the oil sheen, so it was actually gone. So was it a gallon of oil? Was it a gallon of diesel fuel? Was it six ounces of gasoline? I, I don't know what it was. We don't know what it was still to this day. But I called an industry and they provided us some, uh, product that we could use at no cost to the city. And, uh, they, they've even volunteered to come pick it up if necessary or whatever. But, uh, so that's what I wanna, is, is we've got some great partners within our Maumell Industrial Park. And all it took was a phone call from the mayor and say, hey, I need some help. And they sent it over and they met with our, our fire department personnel and took care of the situation. And we had public works personnel there on Saturday. We had police there. So we had a very, uh, good presence. And on a Saturday afternoon, it's hard to get people, uh, contacted for number one. But then we got them all in here and took care of the situation. And, uh, to the best of our knowledge, it's not leaking now, whatever it was. It, you know, someone could've dumped a quart of oil in a, in a manhole, uh, storm drain or something. Just don't know. So, just want you aware of that. Um, next item is planning commission report. Alderman Timmons attended the planning commission and to give the report.
Uh, the report was July the twenty-eighth. It was called to order at six thirty. Um, I lucked out on a real quick meeting. Um, the minutes were approved. There were no public, public comments. Um, no old business. The new business, there was a request for a conditional use permit, um, to locate a church in a PCD zoning district. It was the Christian Life Church, who's currently at seven oh one Murphy Drive. Um, and they'll be moving to four oh one Millwood Circle, Suite one oh four.
That's the former Pizza Hut location.
Yeah. Um, the second request was for a variance, um, in regards to a proposed accessory building that would compromise, uh, seventy-five foot building line. And that was by Kimberly Clark. Um, and they, uh, in order to comply with the wastewater permit with the North Little Wastewater Utility, Kimberly Clark is required to construct a small shed over their existing wastewater metering sampling station. Um, and they are also required to provide an off-street parking adjacent to metering sampling, that metering sampling station where personnel can access the shed. Uh, on the first, there were no questions and it was approved. And it will come up to council on eight fifteen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There any Alderman's comments? Alderman Vapersen?
Will the rings be done by the time the third entrance is done?
I ha, I have been promised that, uh, on Friday, that the concrete and painting would be done by the end of the week by the gentleman that's been contracted to do that. Then we've got to do some, uh, landscaping and, and put a sign up on it. So, yeah.
The audit, how are we?
The, I'm, uh, the audit, uh, we still don't have the LOPF information. We're still waiting. The original delay with that is we don't have the LOPF information. And we're supposed to be getting that the middle of this month, but they promised us we were gonna get it the middle of last month.
Do we need to do anything about that?
We did receive another extension from the folks that we report to, so...
Yeah, we got another extension. And hopefully, it, it may be on the fifteenth agenda. If we get it early enough in August, it probably will be on the first meeting in September. It's probably when the audit will come before the council.
Last thing, the O'Leary lawsuit. I know there's a motion for judgment, uh, summary judgment. Anything we need to know on that? Cause we're all named in a lawsuit, so.
Uh, yes. Uh, glad you brought that up, Alderman Vapersen. I was gonna bring it up. Uh, so there, the plaintiff is moving for summary judgment against the city. We are doing the same. Maumell Water Management has amended their answer and is now cross-suing the city of Maumell, arguing that ordinance two seventy-one was both unlawful and unconstitutional. Uh, so the saga continues.
So now, now there's an additional lawsuit by?
It's the same lawsuit. It's, it's in the umbrella of that lawsuit, but now they're suing the city.
So they're piling on?
Well, they're trying to get a ruling from the judge. Really, what they're saying, yeah. Yeah. So it's not a separate lawsuit. It's all the same thing. Essentially, they're battling it out and the city's in the middle, fighting them both off from both directions with nothing really, yeah, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other Alderman's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, I was just gonna mention something about the O'Leary lawsuit. Uh, and the city clerk may mention this, but filing period is open, uh, for the Alderman seats. So, just a heads up.
Seat one.
Physician.
Correct.
Mr. City Clerk, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, just under FYI, real quick, uh, you had a letter from Mr. Fred Savage regarding the Fourth of July fireworks. I received two more emails. I know one of those emails went to everybody on the council where it appeared to on the email. And it was in favor of retaining the fireworks. I also know that in Ward Three, uh, a citizen sent emails to those two Aldermen against the fireworks. So just keeping you heads up that we're still getting emails or complaints or just, just discussions about the fireworks. And then also, uh, City Attorney Norris mentioned it, but the municipal election information, the filing period is July twenty-ninth through noon, August the nineteenth. Uh, and there's information at the back of the packet if anybody's interested. Not a lot of information, but you can get your petition from the city clerk's office. Or, did you include one?
I did include.
You did include, all right, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Yep. All right, if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
There's a motion and second to adjourn. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.